Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting, March 27, 2023. We'll first start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Roll call, please.
Councilors to go.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasdian.
Here.
Wills.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Conchel.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here. Next item is citizen input. Before we start that, I want to make a special announcement. I've been requested to make this by citizens from past meetings. If you choose to leave the meeting early, which is fine, a lot of times people leave after whatever issue they're interested in is over. That's okay. We'd appreciate if you'd walk out and be quiet and just talk to whoever else is left outside after you're gone. Some people had trouble hearing the meeting because of people making a lot of noise when they're leaving. So appreciate your thoughtfulness. Okay, for the citizen input, each person gets three minutes. I'll call your name and give your address, so you won't have to do that, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first one is James Frescura from 36 Elizabeth Drive.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. I'm here before you today in the citizens' Washington home to address an amendment to prohibit parking of trailers, boats, RVs to conform to fit the new ways of life that are here now and for future residents. Since we have grown from a retirement village to a city that encompasses all generations, retired workers and families, in doing so, we are building schools, bringing new businesses to the city, tourism for golfing, mountain biking, all other outdoor activities, while maintaining a retirement lifestyle ideology. And we pride ourselves on this model. I am a utility trailer that use for personal pleasure and work, like many other citizens. I feel the burden of the cost and time to use professional storage or screen the trailer from view as currently existing ordinance. I can facilitate parking much rather as can other citizens. In researching for my proposal to see the county, city ordinance has only seen a pro prohibited parking. My interpretation was the city of Bella Vista is spending way too much of taxpayers' dollars on a city code enforcement officer, which drives around randomly choosing what codes to enforce or to seek law enforcement. The city of Bella Vista only receives an estimated $500 annual from prohibited parking laws. My proposal offers two opportunities. One is to generate revenue to the city in the form of an annual required $50 permanent parking fee. Second is to assist with preservation of property values, reducing covenant fractions while benefiting the individual property owner who complies with our code guidelines. Also in my research, I discovered the city of Bella Vista, the POA, and the Bella Vista Village ACC were in conflict with the responsibilities of enforcement of prohibited parking. The POA says it's the ACC, the ACC says it's the city of Bella Vista. The city of Bella Vista has historically enforced the prohibited parking code toward residents of Bella Vista City. Today, I have a packet that shows the amendment, your previous city ordinance code that's in place, revenue options, the effect it has by not allowing parking of boats, trailers, and RVs. But also, I would like for you to please clarify who has jurisdiction to regulate enforcement of prohibited parking in incorporated territories of the city of Bella Vista. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alyssa Larkin, 27, Elizabeth Drive.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Larkin. My husband Dana and I own and operate a small business here. We have lived in Bella Vista since 2006 and are fully aware of the ordinances that are in place to keep Bella Vista beautiful, which is why we currently pay to store our RV in a storage facility. I'd like to speak to you about why we support the proposed amendment for 26-36. We started our small business in early 2019, operating using only our truck and hauling our equipment in the back of the truck. Although a bit of a nuisance, it met our needs as our company was slowly building business. Fast forward to 2022, our business has grown 500% with 90% of our business being our Bella Vista neighbors. In order to efficiently and effectively be able to serve our higher demand, we bought a small 6x12 brand-new enclosed trailer to transport our equipment from job to job. Everyone knows time is money, and we were saving an hour a day by not having to load and unload all of our equipment. We've been able to purchase nicer heavy-duty machines that help us to serve our customers in a more efficient way. Apparently, we misunderstood the ordinance about storing an enclosed trailer in your driveway. Our trailer is gone five, sometimes six days a week from eight to five, so we hadn't realized it was considered still stored on our property. We obviously were notified by code enforcement and tried contacting them in regards to how we could resolve this problem. Funny story, one of these days that we received a picture was when my husband came home from lunch and our trailer was literally connected to the back of our truck. We were told by the enforcement officer to just park the trailer in the street. Being married to an ex-law enforcement officer for over 10 years, who was fully aware that it would be a violation due to how narrow our street is and the location of intersections and fire hydrants, we knew this was not an acceptable place to park it. Our lot does not have a suitable place to be able to lay SP2 or a parking pad due to the steepness of our side and backyard, but we do have a very large nine-car driveway. Our only option is to park it in a storage facility, which adds an hour and a half to my husband's workday, increasing the financial and time burden that he already spends working. But do you know what actually is the worst part of this scenario? I'm terrified that someone is going to break into the storage facility and steal my husband's livelihood, just like one of the Bella Vista storage facilities was broken into a few months back. We all know that items are insured and can be replaced, but have any of you filed an insurance claim recently? We're talking two, three, sometimes four months before those claims are paid out. In the meantime, what will happen to my husband's savings? My family, me, like most Americans now, cannot live on one income. My salary as a teacher is not enough to cover everything. As the demographics have changed from a retirement community to an incorporated city, drawing a younger generation of blue-collar workers like ourselves, it's time to show who support small businesses in our city. We see all of the growth happening around us. Contractors building houses leave trailers on site throughout the build of the driveways. Anyone getting worked up to improve their homes will have a work trailer in their driveway. How is this any different? If a change was made to allow vehicles that support temporary occupancy, which improves our ever-growing bike community, to not have to follow the same ordinance, then why can't we make a change to allow trailers to be exempted if they are part of our work vehicle? Thank you.
Good timing. The third person is Michelle Batlemore of 67 Campbell Lane.
I thought that was a sign-in sheet, so I have nothing to say. I'm here to listen.
I'll mark your present. Fourth person is Mary Lee Poole of 24 Kingsland Lane, Bella Vista.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments of time. About eight years ago, my husband and I started trying to decide where did we want to make our home. And I began researching communities all over the nation of where did we want that? In doing so, I carefully read the covenants of the communities we're considering, I carefully read the articles in cooperation with communities. And we settled on Bella Vista because of some of the things that are offered here that are not my screen. One of the things was no street lights. Wow, it's getting to be something that we see more and more often, townspeople put up these massive yard lights in their yard, lighting all night. But primarily, what I wanted to speak about tonight was the fact that I am against allowing commercial vehicles and RVs and sports vehicles and things like that to be parked in our residential areas. Businesses should have a storage facility for businesses or available enclosed garage, which allows you to remove from key. I have no problem with people storing such things on their property if they can't be seen from any street that surrounds their property. If they put up a fence that's tall enough to disclose, put a hut, that would be an acceptable solution. But I do see a lot of broken up, torn down old boats sitting out beside houses that can be seen from the street behind us, they might not be seen from the car. But I just want to say I'm in support of our ordinances, I think I have ambition to do right, that's why we chose to do it, because we love our wildlife, we love the United States of America, and we love the trees that run through our property and store in our home. So thank you very much for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Is there any way the sound can be turned up?
Yeah, I do need to tell you, obviously, this is a new facility, but my understanding is this is a temporary sound system. In fact, our work session, we didn't have microphones at all, so I know it's going to be a frustrating situation. Sounds like maybe these mics work a little better than that one, but apologize for that. We'll do the test again. Next one is Carol Sprague of 7 Broken Circle.
Mayor, I can see digital here on top, maybe come up here.
Did you drive during the exam?
I find this not like this.
Drive the others.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. There we go. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for having me. Okay, I'm here for a different issue. I have a problem with the Airbnb and the pets not on a leash laws. Okay, so we have multiple Airbnbs around our home. We have pets. I walk my pets. They're always on a leash. When the people come to the Airbnb next door to me, they open their car doors, their dogs jump out, we're outside, they're not on a leash, they run around, they don't know, you know, where they're supposed to be going with their owner, the owners are unloading their luggage from the car, et cetera, et cetera, you know, they're on vacation. So the dogs are just roaming free, okay? That's a bother to me, and I'm someone who's been attacked. And obviously, and actually, I've been attacked twice here in Bella Vista in the last two months. The police had to be called because my dog and I got attacked two times from the same dog. People are long-term renters across the street from me. They have their dog on what y'all are calling a run, okay, in the backyard. That dog broke off of the run and literally charged at me and my two dogs while I was out walking my dogs, exercising. Twice that has happened. I would really like to see more leash laws, especially for our visitors. They don't know, in the Airbnbs, they don't list on their listings about dogs being on a leash, or being confined, or being in a backyard, or anything. It's for all of our safety. A lot of people out here exercise outdoors. We walk our neighborhood. We walk our own pets. We don't want to be afraid to be out exercising because somebody else's dog is running loose. So that's just where I am, and I would really like to see an improvement in that, so we can all enjoy Bella Vista and feel safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one is Kelly Cullen of 69 Inham Drive.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I have the same concern as Ms. Bragg does. Recently, an Airbnb or short-term rental was put in next door to us, and they allow pets on the property. There is no fenced backyard, and code of ordinance shows that the method of confinement of dogs, "Any person owning, possessing, keeping, or otherwise responsible for a dog shall confine such dog within a fence or enclosure adequate construction for such purpose within a structure, or shall confine the dog either to a cable or pulley system as described in subsection B." The property next door to me, all they have is a springback porch. There is no fence, and the folks that were there a little over a month ago, they had two very large dogs. My cat was sitting on my fence or possibly in the backyard, I'm not sure, because there's conflicting stories. Their dog was in this springback porch, which was a pit bull, saw my cat, the owners know it likes to chase furry things. It busted out this enclosure, chased my cat, attacked my other cat in my yard, and killed her. And animal control did nothing, the police did nothing. They left this note in my mailbox telling me that they knew their dog liked to chase furry things, offered to pay the vet bills. My cat passed away on the way to the animal hospital. My kitties have been there since the day of their birth. The neighbors that previously lived there, they took care of our kitties, they loved our kitties. Without them fencing that yard to protect the guests and to protect us, my kitties didn't know they shouldn't go over there anymore. And it's hard to untrain that in a couple of months. It's just very upsetting. And also, I noticed in the short-term rental permits, they're supposed to have a permit posted on property, and the owner or local contact information posted visibly at the property, there is not this at this property. They need to get out and enforce the short-term rentals. And I've asked them, please put up a fence, and she will not communicate with you. And as with them, I think the codes need to be enforced. And if I am expected to keep my dogs in a fence to keep them secure, they should have to do the same next door, if they're going to allow pets in their Airbnb. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Hawes of 3 Highlands Parkway.
Thanks for the time this evening, appreciate it. I'm here to talk about Cooper's appeal to rezone both plot of land, track A and B along 340 and Buckston Drive. The plot of land in question is basically a bowling field. Long along Buckstone and short in terms of depth, toward Parker Drive. According to the dimension plans submitted by Cooper, the average net usable depth, based on Cooper's notation, is 95 feet. And you may want to make note of that, this dimension, because I'll return to it. The C2 zoning, village center development concept proposed by Cooper is a multi-story, mid-schedule, and used commercial development scheme, which simply will not fit, will not fit appropriately. On the bowling alley shaped 5.2 acres in question, a C2 zoning classification helps Cooper market and sell the property, but their village center concept is not viable. A neighborhood center and likely a C1 zoning is more appropriate for this plot of land. Looking at the plot from a commercial development standpoint, it basically screams strip center. The optimal bay dimension for a strip center is basically 20 feet wide by 70 feet deep. These bays are modular and are linked together to form a strip center building. Access roads to this development should be minimum 20 feet wide to support access by fire, EMS, delivery vehicles, garbage trucks, and customer traffic. A standard parking space is nine feet wide by 18 deep, and last for this discussion, Senator Call of 20, keep a math. As previously stated, we have an average net usable lot depth of approximately 95 feet based on Cooper's estimate. Again, let's call it 100. Keep your math thin. So if we do the math, building depth is 70. Access road at the building rear, 20. Access road in the building front, 20. One row parking, front, 20. Access road required there. Access both front and rear parking spaces in additional 20. Total all of this up, you come to 150 feet. So based on a 95 foot depth, we're over by approximately 50 feet.
I'm sorry, time's up, Scott. Thank you. Next speaker is Roger Armstrong from 9 Cambria Lane.
Roger Armstrong, I'm also the former president of the Veterans Council and the Wall of Honor, and I'm here regarding recent conversation around the transfer of property of the Veterans Wall to the city, and I'm speaking in opposition to that transfer. I have a few prepared remarks. The Wall of Honor was conceived, designed, and built by a group of local veterans, and a sense of dedication by then-Governor Rockefeller in 2004, managed by veterans who have volunteered their time and energy to maintain the wall. Recently, Senator Bolesman was in attendance as our keynote speaker at our expansion projects groundbreaking. We estimate that upwards of 15,000 to 20,000 veterans reside here in the area who have a vested interest in the wall and its future. I'm sure you are aware that we live in a very patriotic community, and the wall is a valued community asset. The Veterans Council can manage on its own, and under the right kind of leadership, in the past, has been very successful. I brought along copies, which I'll hand out at the end of my presentation, that is a detailed annual report on the council's many activities and achievements for fiscal year ending 6/30 of '22. It shows a number of achievements, and it also shows a 23% gain in its cash position for the same period. It also details increased membership and wall dedication, thus proving that, under the right kind of leadership, the Veterans Council can function and indeed thrive. I'd also like to submit that with regard to the transfer of property to the city, as a citizen and taxpayer residing here in Bella Vista, I believe it sets a bad precedent to use city funds to bail out what is perceived to be failing organizations. Therefore, I respectfully request that the city take with this measure until after the Veterans Council conducts its annual election of officers coming up in June, at which time the entire organization will be given an opportunity to make an informal decision regarding this action and perhaps vote in a new direction for the council. Thank you. And I'd like to quickly pass out the annual report that I have discussed in my comments. Thank you, Roger. And as luck would have it, I'm one report short.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Hughes of 39 Highland Parkway.
I will speak London. I've been to Highland Park Villas, and I've been to all three meetings on the Cooper rezoning. And first of all, I'd like to ask the people from the village to raise their hand. So we're represented very well here, and I've walked the property over there, I've stood and watched the traffic on the bend, the cemetery road and all this. And, you know, right across the road is all this other property, and it's my understanding Cooper owns that. And I don't understand why they want this little piece of property when it was promised to us when we moved here, because over there in the Villas, we are almost all retirees, and we bought these places as our homes. And if you have parents or yourselves or getting close to retirement, when you go and make an investment, it's for the rest of your life unless you have to go to Concordia. And it ends up that, you know, why can't we have the homes put on that cemetery road instead of a commercial property? It just doesn't make sense to me. They have all this land, and they want to do something over there. Who knows what that's going to be? But, you know, my feeling is, I wish everybody would take a second look at this and see about this rezoning. Does it really make sense? It's not a lot of property there, and the church is right there. It makes it like a community with houses without office buildings or whatever Cooper has in mind. I appreciate your time in that, Mr. Mayor and Council. Have a good evening.
Next speaker is Janet Conboy of 8 Highland Parkway.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor and Councilperson. I really appreciate the opportunity to address what, for many and many of us, is really an emotional issue regarding the rezoning of the Buckstone property. I came to Bella Vista five years ago because my best friend lived on Park Ridge, which backs up to the Buckstone property, and told me how wonderful it was when I came down, and it is. And I've become part of the community. I'm on the HOA board. I am part of the garden club. I voted for the POA assessment, don't boo. And I voted for the infrastructure funds to, for the city to address growth. I don't think any of us are against growth. I don't think any of us want anything but reasonable planned development. On the other hand, the people that built on Park Ridge were told that there was going to be residential homes behind them. They lived there, spent their money, and planned their retirements based on what they believed was good faith. Now, I understand that business is business, and dollars drive a lot, but Bella Vista has been known as someplace that values its green space, values reasonable planned development. And I would hate to think that the consequences of one strip of land being rezoned is going to turn a lot of people into really questioning the representation that it's elected and how the government will stand up for them. I mean, I think it's really simple. Either, you know, good faith promises are upheld, and the expectations of we may be, we may be, our numbers as retirees may be smaller than the incoming growth from demographic, fine. But we're still going to be a lot of folks that want to have a community, support us like we support them in you. So please give a great deal of thought of rethinking the planning that was gone into with the 20-year plan. I don't think that it was, the impact of it was what was given the due information to people that it affected.
Next speaker is Oscar Hansen of 9 Park Ridge Drive.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Fowler. Not a month ago, Neil, wasn't it? When we met with four of the property owners and walked that property to see what the distances were, to see how much you could see. In our homes, the four of us, our homes, our first five homes that are right there as you turn into Highland Park Villas. And it is, it seemed like quite a distance. The difference now that I've seen, and I went back and did another test with another person, and we did it later in the evening, but just as it was getting dark, the flashlight. Number one, I could see in my house so easy it was ridiculous. Number two, my wife could see me with the flashlight standing on that property, at the back of the property line. So, I mean, what happens to our privacy? And that's my concern. Again, like everyone said, you know, we bought these properties, by the way, we live in a Cooper community. Cooper built that community. Now, he's taking, they're wanting to take that away and make that part of it become a commercial property, probably for profit. We all understand that, and we all understand what profit philosophy. New building can fall on us, or what you're, but we need, we need to consider our private lives, and I'm not sure that we're making that happen. I'm really concerned about that. I think what we really need to do is take our time and listen to the people, listen to our community. I don't think any one of you, that if you lived in that community, I do not believe that you would be in favor of that. And I don't know how many of you have really actually gone to that property, walked to the back side of the property, and saw how close you were to the homes, and been able to see inside those homes. Yeah, you can say, hey, that's what curtains are made for, that's what blinds are made for. Well, guess what? That's not what we bought the property for. We like that openness with our back to the woods, because we see wildlife, we see greenery in the summer. In the wintertime, we see a lot of wildlife, because we can see deep down into, into the wooded property, into the greenway. So please consider that. We thank you very much for your attention. We appreciate everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Mayor, we've reached the 30-minute mark, so if there's more public comment that council wants to hear, you'll need to move to suspend the rules and vote. The rule only allows till 30 minutes.
I'm willing to suspend the rules and go ahead and continue the public comment. Roll call.
Councilmember Snow.
Hughes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilson.
Wills.
Fowler.
Houchen.
Result of the 6-0 in Denny. Next speaker is Beverly Phillips of 12 Park Ridge.
Good evening, and I thank you for your time. While we respect that CCI owns the subject property, and respect that they have the right to make this request, we also feel that as one of Bella Vista's largest contained communities, we have certain rights, especially the decision to be made, since the decision to be made is literally in our own backyard. I'd like to express some concerns from questions asked at our last meeting. After Mr. Fowler told us there would have to be a buffer of fencing and trees, we found out that a structure could be as high as 40 feet high. How do you buffer a 40-foot structure from peering into your backyard? CCI is saying they can get more money for commercial because there is highway fr禎. And then, and then it was revealed that it would have to be approved by our nod for entrance off Lancashire. We already have a problem with people traveling at high speed and accidents with four left and right-hand turns into and out of St. Berners, Highland Village Gate House, Park Ridge Drive, and then Buckstone. From Rogers Road to Buckstone is six tenths of a mile. Two tenths from Rogers to St. Berners, one tenth to Village Gate House, one tenth to Park Ridge, and not quite two tenths to Buckstone. We have one traffic light in which, in what you've now referred to as the new village center, which has dramatically increased the traffic flow on Buckstone, with people trying to avoid the lights speeding down a dangerous one-lane road with a warm, and with a warm day this last Sunday, the traffic noise within the house is unacceptable. There are many more valid concerns which we voiced in our past meetings. CCI's council and his response to the planning commission's denial said that our concerns were arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. Our answer to this charge is that they, the commission, listened. He doesn't live here, meaning, meaning Cooper. We do. We love Bella Vista and want it to be the best it can be, but it shouldn't come at the expense of destroying one of Cooper's most sought-after properties for the last 25 years, our homeowners' privacy, our way of life, and our property values. With the new vision of Bella Vista Village Center, we would ask CCI to reconsider and sit down with us and, and the planning mission to work out a plan to benefit all. With that, we respectfully ask the council to reconsider and resubmit the planning commission for further review. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Linda Lloyd of 102 Fairway Drive.
Good evening. I'm also here to speak about the rezoning at Lancashire and Buckstone. I appreciate all the comments of the neighbors, and I sincerely feel that all of their comments would be more appropriate in the development phase of this property, where lights and parking and access would be, would be taken, taken into consideration. Over many years when there, since we've been a city, when there is a public input session or a survey done, the community in general always says we need more commercial. That's been for two reasons. Number one, to provide more resources for the people of Bella Vista. And number two, that we want to have our commercial tax base, rather than our residential tax base, be weighed down as we move forward. As a longtime real estate broker and appraiser, I can tell you the highest and best use of that property is very definitely not residential, but is commercial. Putting residential homes on that piece of property would not be a good way to go. I think it's with having a property that has a flat area, that has access to public water and sewer, and that also is listed as commercial in the comprehensive plan, council has a duty to follow that and follow the input of the community in general and to rezone this property C1, not C2, but C1. And I want to point out to all the people who are speaking, when there is a zoning request, the council does not and cannot take into consideration who is the owner of the property, or what other properties they may have. That is not within council's purview. They have to treat every property owner the same. And having said that, I think these comments tonight have been very respectful. Last month, there were some very derogatory comments made, and people even booed when Jean Grossclose spoke, and I think that's inappropriate. So I think this, this property should definitely be commercial, and the residents' concerns will be taken care of during the development phase. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jody Wilson of 25 Park Ridge.
I just have two points that I want to make. First is that the proposed zoning change would also change the character of one of the most attractive and well-maintained residential neighborhoods in Bella Vista. Second, steep slopes are subject to erosion. Plant cover and trees provide some protection against this. Removal of trees and replacing ground cover with concrete and asphalt could create problems for nearby properties down the line. Here's a photo of the runoff from last week's rain as viewed from my home. The water has to go someplace.
Next speaker is Larry Kelly of Coller Lane.
You're going to be surprised by these comments, because they have nothing to do with what's going on tonight. Actually, what I wanted to address the council on is that I've had the opportunity to visit at Bentonville City Council meetings and also at the state legislature, and they do public comments a little differently. And I know that some conversations occurred around public comments here. And so I was going to offer some ideas that they're taking into consideration. It's kind of helpful, and that is that in Bentonville, they take public comments in the category that the ordinance is, or that the comments are coming up. And so it gives the city council an opportunity to respond. In some ways, it's almost like a conversation, which is kind of helpful. And it categorizes everything as it comes up, rather than all in the front, because I know there's a number of issues to be considered tonight, and certainly we want public comment, but it gets a little hard to track. And so just an idea that reading that ordinance or reading that information, whatever the topic is coming up, and then having a public comment immediately following that, gives a little bit more context, it gives it a little more relevancy, and easier to track. And they do that at the state legislature as well. So just.
Next comment, our next speaker is Duval Lane, Jim Parsons.
I am Jim Parsons, and I'm 29 Duval Lane, live on Lake Avalon, and I'm state director, not the state director, but I am the chairman of Bella Vista Patriots. Have two proposals I want to make, and one of them, Roger Armstrong has already alluded to it, and that's regarding the Wall of Honor. We understand that last Monday night, while the Veterans Council approached you and said something about they'd like to transfer maybe the Wall of Honor to the city. And they are saying, and it is true, that so many of them are in their 90s, like I am, I'm 90, and just getting too old to be doing things, and so they needed to pass it off to some younger group. So that's what they want to do, and that's what they need to do. The Bella Vista Patriots have a group of people who have been on the Wall of Honor, who have been successful, of their chaplain, and even at 90, while I can still pray, can't do much more beyond that. But anyway, we would like to have you disregard the offer to do the Wall of Honor. We feel like you have enough on your plate. You, it's a good thing you became a city in 2006, because I It's a good thing you became a city in 2006, because I think the roads, the police, the fire, those are all big ticket items. And for you to take on the Wall of Honor and another responsibility, I just don't think you need that, and the taxpayers don't need it either. And it is a job for the veterans. It's our responsibility to take care of the Wall of Honor, and we'll do it. We've got a group called Veterans Wall of Honor Group that are well experienced, can do it. So we'd like for you to disregard that. That's one proposal. The other proposal that I have is that had a pelican get in the hurricane ann in the eye of it, stayed in that thing until it got up here, and when the hurricane played out, the pelican fell into Lake Bella Vista. Somebody went out there and shot it with an arrow, went through its neck, if you'll recall, the news. Veterinarian was able to capture the bird, get the arrow out of it. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had the same thing over at Lake Avalon. Somebody with a bow and arrow shot a goose, and it went through the wing, the back, where it couldn't fly. And when you shoot an animal that way, if you used a .30/30, it'd be over with immediately. But when you shoot with a bow and arrow, a deer will run off, be in the woods, die several weeks later of starvation or infection, and we just don't need it. Would like for you to cancel the bow and arrow in Bella Vista Hunting. We need to stop it.
Next speaker is Wayne, I can't read the last name, on 21 Park Ridge. Two people in a row, Wayne and Jacqueline, maybe Brumer at 21 Park Ridge. That's okay, we have plenty of speakers. Next speaker is Mary Hafner of One Highland Parkway.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Hafner, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm speaking in opposition of the resulting petition, number 2022-46586, which would result in a change in the zoning from residential to C1 neighborhood commercial use. According to its website, there are fifty-nine residents at the Plaza Highland Center. There are over a hundred homes in the Highland Park Villas Homeowners Association. There are also a small number of residents in the apartments at Highlands Crossing Center. All of these are within eight-hundred-and-eighty yards of Buckstone and Lancashire, which is central to the proposed change. That means there are approximately a hundred and seventy households that use Lancashire Boulevard as the primary access to the city, coming in from both sides of the roads. Personal experience, I can tell you that it's a highly trafficked area. Additionally, there's St. Berners of Clairville Catholic Church. That represents additional traffic that flows into that area. The March nineteenth, 2023 St. Berners Bulletin lists an average of seven different activities occurring on Mondays through Fridays for the upcoming week. That's seven every day. It stated that an average of two-hundred-and-thirty-four persons were in attendance for services Saturday evening and Sunday morning, the weekend of March fourth and fifth, with two additional activities occurring on Saturday. Due to the number of households and church-related traffic, I believe the proposed change will significantly increase traffic, the risk of accidents or congestion in this area, and I don't feel that enough consideration has been given to the impact or study of future impact of traffic in that area. An additional concern that I have is the type of commercial development that might occur. At the February meeting, some examples of potential development were offered that included healthcare services and business offices. To be fair, it was also noted that there could be no assurance that these were the types of commercial entities that would in fact be ultimately developed. That may be curious. So I went in and looked at the Appendix A table of permitted uses of the Bella Vista City Code of Ordinances dated on the city website as February tenth, 2023. It identifies a much wider range of potential uses. There are provisions for duplexes, residential, single-family homes, group home facilities, bed breakfast, lodging. Then we have food sales, convenience, limited, or general food sales, liquor sales, pawn shops, business and trade schools, commercial recreation services, laundry, civic uses, financial services, and other things. I think this may impact the area, and I ask you to reconsider your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Waters of Ford Brighton Lane.
Good evening, council mayor. Appreciate this time that we have to share our feelings about our community with you all. And my concern is about the Highland Parkway area, petition number 2022-46586. And as stated earlier, the land is not supported zoning that would be allowed if it was a business for parking, for access, and there's no transition area from existing housing to this new place. And that should be probably a forty-foot burn, forty-foot tall. And so now we're over a hundred and sixty feet, trying to squeeze it into a hundred feet. It should have support wildlife, since that's what they have now, making trees, I don't know what. But the problem is, I can understand people want to make money, not as expensive for the people. That's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Don Seven of 22 Ripley Lane.
How many spokes you got up there, James?
Good evening. I'm here to alert the council to a danger that's headed your way. There seems to be a movement within the Arkansas Legislature to minimize the authority of city, state, and county and local government. They're doing this by using expanded definition of property rights. They're expanding that definition to be, Arkansas has the right to use their property without intrusion by government. Now, we all like the idea of having our rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and we all value our property rights. But since when do we have those rights without intrusion by government? My God, government intrudes every day, mostly to promote the general welfare and protect those other liberties we have. Senate Bill 197 is probably going to pass, and it is a continuing of a chipping away, actually, it's a continuance of a chipping away of local authority. Recently, there was an ordinance passed by one of the cities to ban pit bulls. Well, they have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Well, they're not going to kill people. This city thought they had to protect their citizens from that type of dog. Well, the state legislature thought better. I mean, they're up there, the other side of the state, those dogs are nice, they don't know about the dogs down here. My concern is, you've got to pay attention to what they're doing up there, because pretty soon, these meetings, you're just going to be, you're saying, "Oh, yes, the state's going to let us do this, and the state's going to let us do that." And when they start that, the federal government's going to come in and take over and say, "We'll take care of that." You guys are important, and we really need you to fight to keep your power.
Next speaker is Bill Hayfun of 11 Rockwell Drive.
I think maybe the last one, so I can make sure. Good evening. I'm here to support the proposed amendment for the parking in Bella Vista. Today's demographic, I feel like the current code is lacking practicality and reasonable expectations and accommodations for us who use the outdoor recreation of this. I'm boat owner. I've been knocking on the door, written letters a time or two. I do know the current code, but I do also fish a lot. But fishing comes, changing tackle, rear beam, getting boat ready to take it out to the lake. Right now, I've got about just under an acre lot with roughly twelve hundred square feet of driveway space, flat. I feel like the limitations on me to be enjoying outdoors that Bella Vista has to offer doesn't equate to what the current code is. I feel like the current code in itself, I'm sorry, I don't have the script written. The current code is written to more or less penalize us who are using the facilities. Yes, my pack grew up today. Yes, I paid my hundred and twenty-five dollars tag to get out on the water. But also, I moved to Bella Vista about three years ago with my family, I've got two kids. I don't want to walk my kid's view, my view, and the floor and follow, which we actually moved to Bella Vista for, and that being one of the issues with the screen, I feel like is putting me more at a burden. And I feel like the inconvenience is on me as a landowner with my own private property, on my own property. I feel like it's more inconvenience on that aspect than the passerby or the neighbor, because I am a good neighbor, so my ability to keep my house and everything else up to date. So I just wish you would consider the proposal, and then from previous, I know there's been several conversations between now and then, to actually take into consideration some changing times and also whether it's RV, motor trailer, even ones who use trailers for water, to take a possible look at negative comment, I think is a little bit better.
Thank you. That's the last of the speakers. It's now time for our council reply, if anyone would like to make a comment.
Just one quick one. We need to remember, we're no longer a sleepy village. We're no longer a retirement place. We need to remember, we're no longer a sleepy village, we're no longer a retirement place. Things change, we have to change with them. We have to be a little more open-minded than we learn past. And yes, things need to be changed here and there. I feel sorry for the trailer guys and SB2 guys, and even for the homeowners out there. But you have to remember, we have to give a little bit to get what we did. I don't know how long some of you have been here, but do you remember when the body shop went in? You had just the same kind of crowd, three months in a row, and we put it in anyhow. And now, everybody loves it. And how many times have you heard over the years from other cities, veterans or others, even not from here or even where you're from? When somebody wants to put in a new subdivision across the street, or a series of businesses across the street, the first words out, boat traffic and noise, and we've lost our way of life. Well, it's time for everybody, both sides of every issue, to give a little bit. One side gives, the other side gives, pretty soon everybody's happy. And we really don't have a clue what Cooper's going to do with that corner. And I can't see him putting up a forty-foot fence, or I can't see him putting up a forty-foot building. And all he's trying to do is make it so he can maybe sell or develop himself. And what the man said, let's get past this part, and then the building division can beat them up as far as what they can and cannot with it. Thank you.
Wendy?
First, thank you for everyone who had to speak tonight. I get a little nervous, it's a lot of bravery and courage, I appreciate everyone who came and talked. I also just want to say a little note to Ms. Cohen, I am so sorry for the loss of your beloved pet that is devastating, and you're seen and heard, I'm so sorry for
No, I'm not saying anything, just except for, Wendy already mentioned it, but yeah, using a pet like that is really difficult, really sorry that happened, which people could be more responsible with their, so. And as far as the rezone goes, we'll be talking about that in just a minute, so no need to make a comment right now.
There's a comment and a couple of others. One is Senate Bill 197 that has to do with turf term records. And one comment that spoke said they're taking away our local jurisdictional right, as it was spelled, for governing local problems. We certainly, I would certainly wholeheartedly agree. I've sent a number of emails to committees in the Senate, and I suppose committees in the House. My sense is that it probably will pass. The amendments that I've read, it reads, the bill now reads like it was written by a fourth grader, maybe, without the English. It says in there that we're taking away, but you can't take away property rights of a property owner in Arkansas, that's part of our constitution. But I think there's a little misinterpretation there. It would suggest that a hothouse is okay in the neighborhood, but the community can't control that, and suggests that, if you read between the lines, I'm sure that's not the intent of the original constitution in Arkansas. What they're trying to do is to limit governance over property, so Arkansas is generally considered a property right state. We recognize that, but when you have issues that affect one neighbor because of actions of another neighbor, regulations are important. They suggest, at the hearing, suggested that, the speakers there, that if we had better enforcement of our noise and parking ordinance, perhaps that would have solved the problem. Well, not totally true, perhaps a little true, but not really totally true. You have to, first of all, do some things to put a ticket on the vehicle that's misparked. Call the policeman there, yes. Code enforcement, yes, but it's a little more difficult than just putting a ticket on it. Noise is a whole different story. You have to hear the noise, record the noise, and make sure that it's above a certain level that's in our code. Our code is very similar to the ones around, in communities of Bella Vista, Rogers, all the boroughs. So if you want action at the state level, you folks are really more influential than we are as elected officials. You call your representatives, you send emails to your representatives, speak to them directly about your disagreement and disapproval, you'll have much more impact than we will. I know other members of the council have been active in communicating with our state representatives. I've gotten responses from two of them who are not committed that they support us or don't support us. Fellow of the rezon and Buxton, property owners have rights. You have rights as a property owner. The difficulty being is that we have an overlay because of the developer, when he created the three-hundred-and-twenty subdivisions, over thirty-eight thousand lots. If you live in any area except for the park side plaza, folks, you will realize that there are a lot of vacant lots along the street where you live, and you think that's just vacant space. We have about thirty-eight or thirty-nine thousand lots that are buildable in the city. We have less than half that are built up. So you will see the landscape change significantly as we progress through the years ahead. Bella Vista at thirty-eight thousand lots probably reflects a population of about seventy-five thousand. We think traffic is bad now, but within another ten years, we'll see it will be increasingly worse. Three-forty and two-seventy-nine are state highways, we have no jurisdiction on those. So access to them is approved by the state highway department. Trailer parking, I have sentiments about that. The city adopted the rules originally. I thought it was unfair for the city to adopt the rule that prohibited allowed belt car trailer parking in driveways, but didn't allow boat trailer parking, which is trailer parking in driveways, but didn't allow boat trailer parking, which is equally as important to Bellevista as a recreational tool as the development is. Unfortunately, go back to the covenants. The developer saw developing as being the primary factor, didn't allow boat trailers either. We can allow boat trailers, but it wouldn't be allowed with the covenants. So why, why do we want to be disagreeable with something that we can't change? Cooper could change that, changing bylaws, covenants to remove that restriction that they chose. I don't know that it's a good one to remove. I think it does keep the neighborhoods a little cleaner. And unfortunately, yes, we have lots of folks who work from home that have a job trailer. That's unfortunate, but that is a way of life. So we just need to work through it. Thank you.
I just want to make a brief comment about the Veterans Wall of Honor. The president and Lord of Veterans Wall of Honor approached the city and the POA. That's how that conversation got started. It's still a conversation. Nothing's been executed. From my point of view, from the city's point of view, we were trying to help out and spend as little taxpayers' money as possible. And in my day, I became aware of some activities of the POA and they've been incredibly helpful and generous to the Wall of Honor both before and after, whether it's change his hands or not. So I give them a lot of credit for that. And point made, we're perfectly happy to go slow and make sure, you know, people are on board. As a first, I was aware that there was different people with different attitudes about that and that's fine if we can wait until you folks work that out one way or the other. Just a short comment. So next item on the agenda is action on the minutes. The February 27, 23 minutes, there are motion to approve, reiterate, and discuss it. Motion by Mr. Wills, second by Doug Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilperson, Hunchell.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Next item on the agenda is reports. The first report is the State of the City Report by how long the mayor needs to give a State of the City Report within the first 90 days. So I know you've had a lot of long discussions and my State of the City Report isn't too long, but I'm going to go ahead and read it. State of the City, Bellevista, Arkansas, March 27, 2023. The state of the city is excellent. We are in great financial shape. Year-end 2022 financials are completed and we can report that operating revenues increased by more than $1 million compared to the prior year and exceeded $23 million for the first time. City sales tax receipts increased by about 13% and gross revenues were more than $30 million, an all-time record. Our unassigned reserve balance at year-end was about $17.8 million, which is a large increase over the prior year and the largest in the city's history. This was done purposely due to significant capital expenditures planned for 2023 in preparation for a possible recession. As you know, elections were held in Bellevista this fall. The result is a new mayor, a new city clerk, and two new council members. Turnout in Bellevista was very high as more than 15,000 residents voted, a record. The per capita participation in the election was far greater than other cities in northwest Arkansas, far greater. I'm very proud of you with that. The city's 1% bond issue was passed by the Bellevista voters in March 2020 to be used to build a new fire station on Glasgow Road, a new public safety building to house the police, dispatch center, and the court facility, and a new fire training tower and accompanying training center. The new fire station was completed in early 2022. The public safety building is recently completed and the police and court are fully functional in the new location. The fire station training tower, we hope, will be completed by the end of 2023. In the meantime, our city sales tax receipts have exceeded expectations and the bond may be paid out as early as 2027, as opposed to the previously anticipated date of 2042. Since the bond was at a rate, rate rate of 1.1% and most of the public safety building materials were contracted for prior to the recent inflationary spike, the projects have turned out to be spectacularly successful from the taxpayers' viewpoint. The police department has had another successful year. Chief Graves has worked hard overseeing the construction of the new public safety building. We have overcome several challenges, including securing water from Cooper for fire suppression at the new building, overcoming IT investment shortfall due to product cost escalation, and working through design oversights. The police also continued with their positive community relations through several community activities, including coffee with a cop, national night out, citizens' police academy, and the senior safety academy. Bellevista remains one of the safest cities in Arkansas and even in the entire U.S. The fire department opened their new Branchwood Fire Station in January of 2022. This allowed the city to have both ambulance service and fire truck capability at the Glasgow Road location. In addition, land was purchased for the new fire training facility. The fire department worked in conjunction with the street department to rebuild Carlisle Drive for the fire training facility. The city ordered their second ladder truck and it has a planned delivery date of April 2023. In addition, the fire department continued their vaccine program by offering the new COVID-19 biivalent booster for citizens. There were also flu shot clinics offered throughout the city. The Community Development Services Department, CDS, had another busy year with 668 residential new building permits applied for and 547 permits issued. Total building permits issued for all purposes were 4,912 in 2022. In addition, several new businesses were established, including Fat Tire, which was new construction, and Bison Bikes. There were several ordinance updates and a new short-term rental ordinance was passed in December 2022. Five miles of trails were added in 2022, including several user-friendly adaptive trails. The Back Forty Trail System had 296,157 users in 2022. The Little Sugar Trail System is now fully completed and adds more than 50 miles of trail in Bellevista. Our total trail count is now over 100 miles of trails. In addition, we broke ground on the Mercy Way Bridge project and the Razorback Regional Greenway extension into the city. The earlier Razorback Greenway extension to Metfield has been extremely popular with the citizens and local use is very high. Finally, CDS was involved in two Citywide Tree Giveaways of Trees provided by the Walton Family Foundation. The street department had another stellar year in snow and ice removal and our road clearing operation is arguably the best in northwest Arkansas. The street department resurfaced 54 miles of city streets in 2022. They received 795 citizen requests in 2022 and completed 96% of those requests in a timely manner. The old fire station number three was successfully converted into a street department substation, including a stand-in salt storage facility. In addition, the department completed major drainage improvements and street upgrades to Highlands Boulevard. The library entered the state library resource sharing system Mockingbird for the first time, making one of the more frequent users of the system. New staff members and rejuvenated summer reading program were among the highlights this year. The library also added one indoor mural and three outside artworks to their growing collection. Customer and usage rates have increased greatly and the library is planning a major parking lot expansion in response to the rapid growth. The library facility has added repainted air purifiers, new media shelving, new signage, and a new roof and complete cover system this year. The city of Bellevista and its residents continue to enjoy a long-term upward trend in their quality of life. The population of Bellevista is increasing and the average home value in Bellevista has increased dramatically. The average age of Bellevista residents continues to decrease due to an influx of younger residents and young families attracted to our city. In summary, Bellevista is quite successful by every metric. I am committed to effectively managing our city and its resources so that our residents can experience an ever-increasing quality of life while still preserving our beautiful natural environment and the relaxed atmosphere that we all enjoy. John D. Flynn, Mayor. Thank you for your attention. Okay, the next item is the financial report. It has been given to the council members. This was the year-end report for 2022. I think there was a few physical copies handed out and it's on our website and we're available for questions later if anyone's interested. Okay, next item of business is unfinished business and ordinance.
Want to suspend the rules again?
Yeah. Would you, we'd like to have a motion to entertain, suspend the rules of procedure and read all ordinance is on the agenda by Daniel Holden.
Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wills.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hunchell.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Motion passed, six to zero. Okay, unfinished business and ordinance, amended Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46586, county parcel number 16-40234-001, from R1 residential single-family district to C1 neighborhood commercial district. And this is the third final reading. Is there any discussion?
Guess I'll start. I'm sure I'm going to be the only one. First of all, a point like this, I kind of find it a little more difficult that conversation about, I say friends in the audience, and I hope you still are when this conversation's over tonight. So I understand from a personal perspective, as a city council member, I'm not necessarily for it or against it. We have to take a different point of view on a conversation of a rezon. And like I believe Mr. Kelly mentioned, it doesn't matter who it is that's requesting. You only consider things like will it increase traffic, will it increase noise, will it increase traffic, will it increase crime, good building design, you know, things like that. And during the last meeting, I kind of took everybody through, you know, all the steps that I had already taken. And I'm not going to reiterate that because I've got a whole entire page here in the minutes from February. One thing I will say, and Oscar mentioned this, it's a pleasure being Oscar, he's a real nice guy. He's real reasonable and I found him a friend, a gentleman that I never would be the same. And I appreciate that. There was no ill-conversation or ugliness or anything like that at her, so that was, that was really nice. And they, you know, they listened to everything that I had to do, the considerations I had to make. And one of the things during the meeting last month that I wanted to kind of take a shot at was to educate, not just the residents of Park Ridge or anybody who lives in that area, but also maybe an opportunity for residents of ours to maybe pay attention to this rezon request. So we went through some of that and Taylor, who is our head planner at our Community Development Services Department, she's very well spoken, very knowledgeable, knows what she's doing, took us through how planning is involved in the development of a commercial project. And we have a lot of rules in play, okay? We talked about some of those, you know, buffering, landscaping, and just all kinds of things, lighting, a whole bunch of stuff, colors, whatever it may be. I think something that we did talk about was what is required of a residential development. And we don't really think about this, but really, there's not really anything required. If a home is going to be built, the builder submits the plans and they're reviewed. And I don't want to speak on this, but it's pretty much true, I think. If I say something a little bit ironic, you may not think correctly, but this is correct. It doesn't go through a planning process. The plans are submitted, the plans are approved, and then after that, the building inspectors will kind of take over and manage the project, okay? And the setbacks for residential properties are not quite as great a setback as they are for commercial, commercial properties. There are, there is no buffering required. There's no landscaping required. The residential developer can come in and completely clear cut a lot and basically build a residential property like they want. So when that residential property is actually built out, you could have things in the backyard like lights, you could have playground equipment, you could have trampolines. So not everything is positive about residential necessarily. I'm not saying this to be like negative, I'm just saying that there are two different processes for residential and for commercial. If you come up with a commercial, there's much, much, much more oversight. So I hope that people be managed like that, okay? And I don't think Bellevista is known for being easy on commercial development project. Also, that area we talked about a little bit during the February planning session, the comprehensive plan 2040, that area was designated to be hopefully some type of a commercial retail note that can be walkable, very easily drivable, and it would benefit residents on the west side of the city because right now, you either have to go into Bentonville or Rogers or you have to go to the lower part of 71, you have to drive. So we're trying to, you know, create a little area there and hopefully that development will unfold responsibly, right? That would be our goal. And also, Jim mentioned the auto body shop. I know you said Jim Warren specifically, but hopefully whatever goes in there, we're going to find someone along that's going to own that property that is going to be as community-minded as Jim, okay? Maybe shouldn't say his name specifically, but you know, that's who it is. There was so much opposition to that when it got that emboldened. And whatever they go into that property, I would also like to know, I think it's been run up already, but they originally requested a C2 zone, which was a much more broad list of permitted uses, okay? And we actually posed the question, would they consider doing a C1, which takes the list of permitted uses down greatly? And they came back and they agreed. So I feel like they kind of already met us halfway. So I feel like they've kind of already met us halfway, at least in that regard. So, again, I'm just trying to look at this independently. I have to look at the community, the benefits of the community at large. Is that property going to be developed? Is it going to be developed irresponsibly? How much will it impact or affect the neighbors? I mean, pretty much everybody in Bellevista has somebody or someone in their backyard somewhere. And that actually is a pretty nice buffer with that being there. And then there's going to be additional buffering required and if that property even is developed, because I don't believe it's been sold or anything like that right now at all. It's just a rezon change, and that's it. But I can't even consider whether it's been sold or not been sold. That's not part of this whole process. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, add a few more comments to what we discussed last month concerning residential versus commercial.
Well, so I had an opportunity to drive out of Park Ridge. I met with Mr. Huber. I had a great conversation with him probably about a month, month and a half ago. And I've driven it from time to day since then. And on the way here, I drove it again. I came from the, yeah, 279, and drove down by the cemetery on those very thorough roads, sat down at the parking lot in the Patrick Church, just sat there for a while, saw the houses, saw the, it's all in terms of the bowling alley kind of strip, the strip area that is in question. And I think as a council, we have to really consider, would heavyweight the planning commission decision to pass on this? The planning commission had the opportunity to also move from C2 to C1. They didn't. And this failed. It was appealed, and that's what Mr. Hansel now can speak on, like, since he was on the panel, sorry, correct. What kind of, I know you voted against it, Ben. I was able to say, I mean, I'm sorry. Kind of make where you were coming from, your thoughts. And I know you can't speak to the other commissioners, but kind of the discussion was happening at that time.
I don't recall specifically, there really wasn't much discussion, to be honest. It was just a flat vote. My rationale and what I struggle with, this really strikes close home for me. This is the type of development that got me involved with politics in 2006, as time flies. The fit to the neighborhood is what I really struggle with. Because I know what everybody out there is thinking as far as what could go up and how it's going to impact you and your neighborhood. You know, see the church and a neighborhood and another church in my mind, and then conjure up a commercial. And I really struggle with, I'm going to get the type of use wrong, but that's one thing that I would like to look at is that type of use in the city code because you're talking about something that gets access maybe, you know, I don't know what church outlets are, but you know, not very much. But my thinking is trying to put anything commercial into somebody's backyard, you know, what I struggle with is that every time I drive by any kind of development that I put my yes or no vote, I would really struggle with having to look and see what I did to that neighborhood. And I know that's probably not the proper perspective, but I have to live with my decisions. You know, I know that the taking aspect by the advocate, and I'm not considering who it is, you know, but when does that investment of a neighborhood, you know, when does their investment come into consideration? You know, we're supposed to just say, well, somebody's got to take it. You know, just you got to live with it. And that's a hard, that's a bitter pill for me to swallow because I don't think that's just a, you can't just pass that off just passively, just say that and just kind of shrug your shoulders and go, well, I can deal with it. I do have to deal with it. I have to deal with it every time I drive by it. So I'm not in favor of it. You know, and as Councilman Fowler pointed out, residential, anything that goes in there, it is, it's, once it's a residential design, it's pretty much out of our hands. So it can be kind of anything. It could be a row of two small eight houses down through there, four or five tall. So what are we going to do? But to me, accountability comes into it. You know, I do believe that houses were bought under the pretense that it would be a similar development that would come in right behind your houses. And I think that that's important, that that is kind of respected. So, but anyway. I'm not as elegant as a speaker as Councilman Fowler, but those are my thoughts. And I appreciate everybody coming out. It's really important to see you guys, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi.
Go ahead, Larry.
I guess it's a difficult thing to choose on this issue. I know I was at the planning commission when the issue was dealt with there, where they did not ask the developer to change the zoning. And so the request before the planning mission was for C2 zoning, C2 commercial. The planning mission could have taken a strong view of it at that point in time. They chose not to allow it to proceed through and then chose to vote it down. That gave the property owner the right to appeal that decision. In other words, any decision that the planning commission makes is appealable to the city council on some topics, not everything, but some topics, so he was one of them. So they appealed it to the city council, and a motion was made at my request to reduce the intensity of the commercial development allowed on the property from C2 to C1. So it reduces the impact, the potential impact a great deal by reducing the selection of commercial that can be put there. The developer was receptive to that, and so the amendment was made to the ordinance before us today to rezonate from R1 to C1. The reality in Bellevista is that I think, and this is my view, it may not be to 100% accuracy or the truth, is that the developer bought on large tracts, a large quantity of land in the Bellevista area. It was rural farm land and wayback land. They planned out, laid out, planned out, and developed 320-plus subdivisions totaling some 38,000 lots. We've grown a great deal since I came here in '05. And we've seen a lot of building going on. And we hear complaints every day about all the trees going, clear-cutting lots and cleaning them out so that houses can be built. But much of the land in Bellevista is planted subdivisions. People own it like you and me. In fact, I understand that one of our legislators owns perhaps up to 300 lots in Bellevista. So he has a specific interest here. At one time, we had companies from California and Florida bought lots on the street corner when they had a lot sales and flew people in all over to sell them at high rates. So we've seen the community change. Unfortunately, the original plan had envisioned perhaps Bellevista to be a retirement community, which means that houses would be vacant half the year. Quite frankly, maybe more than half the year. Folks from up north would go up north in the summer, come back country in the winter. People that moved here from the south would come up here in the summer and go back south in the winter. And so the density of population, while there may be 38,000 lots or 38,000 potential houses, the demographics of the people living here would have been much different. And so the need for commercial development to service the people here would have been much less if you were dealing with roughly half the population, whether you were in the spring or the winter or the fall. The result of that is, is that we have much less commercial development plan suitable for commercial development in the city. And I think reality is, is that I've heard lots of complaints that why doesn't Bellevista have more eateries, more choices? Why don't they have more places for commercial buy-this-and-buy-that stores? And the reality is, we don't have any locations that are suitable for them to develop. We have limited commercial space now that is developed. Some of it is vacant. Some of the pictures we got tonight that was passed out show some of the vacancies there. I can't explain that, Mr. Wyatt's naked. Is it a landlord issue? Is it a location issue? Is it merely a pricing issue? So there's a whole bunch of questions that you can pose there. Down the center west, there's a camp called Unraised, completely inside, I think, here. A bus was shopping along the west side of 71. So I think you need to be prudent and look at our future in the city and look at the potential for increased tax revenue. This area, yes, is adjacent to a residential area, but it's the backyard, not the front yard, that we're talking about budding up to. Frequently, zoning changes occur in the backyard or the centerline of the street. Sometimes you drive down the street, you have one development type on one side, one development type on the other side. In this case, it's the backyard. There is a common property space back there which provide even more separation. The real emphasis, I think, I would suggest to you residents out there who still do not agree with the potential for rezoning or ask the council not rezoning, is that you follow closely with the community development office and ask that the condo association be alerted when any application comes in for development on that property. When that comes in, there will be a set of plans that have to be submitted. There are standards for development for commercialized. And you can go to the, and it will be presented before the planning commission itself. You can review those plans before they get to the planning commission. So if you can get a notification like that from the CDS planning office that alert you to any development occurring on the land should be rezoned tonight. I don't know where my fellow council members are. I, with difficulty, must support the request to rezon. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Let's go.
Wanted that we have the motion in second?
No.
No? Okay. We need a motion to keep you with the written ordinance.
We want to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Councilmember Snow?
Excuse me, yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
I'm so sorry for clarification. Are we voting on passage of this or are we voting to vote on it?
I'm voting to approve.
That's a solid no.
Councilmember Wasniak? Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
No.
Motion passed six to two. Next piece of business is amended in appendix A, table of permitted uses of chapter 109 zoning to make trails and use as a right within all zones and for other purposes. Staff requests moving the third and final reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rule. We will confirm.
Is there any discussion? If you want to go ahead, vote on that. Okay, roll call vote. Fowler voted in second. Okay, for Hansel, second. Sorry.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Motion passed. That was the third and final. It's all rated again. Amended in appendix A, table of permitted uses of chapter 109 zoning to make trails and use as a right within all zones and for other purposes. That's the third and final reading. Is there any discussion about it?
We'll approve. Second.
That was Wills and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in total amount of $114,000 for the purchase of three 2023 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the police department. And staff request third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rule to the third. Second.
That was Wasniak and Wills. Roll call vote. Motion to go to third and final.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion to go to third and final. Passed six to zero. Rated again. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $114,000 for the purchase of three 2023 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the police department. Is there any discussion? Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Wasniak and Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amended in Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-47828, county parcel number 16-21131-003, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Staff request moving the third and final. This is the property for clarification. This is the property that's at Midfield at the Clubhouse. And Taylor is ill tonight, but Doug Tap is here. If anyone is here for him, buy it. So is there a motion to move the third and final?
Motion to suspend the rule to the third. Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak. This is the vote to go to third and final.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. I'll read it for third and final. Amended in Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-47828, county parcel number 16-21131-003, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any conversation there?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Fowler and Wills. Roll call vote and motion to approve.
Councilmember Wills? Councilmember Wills.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47387, county parcel number 16-70323-004, and 16-70332-004, from R1 Single Family Residential District to C2 Life Commercial District. And staff request going to the third and final. And this is for the South Gulf Central location, and it's going to, from R1 to C2.
Motion to suspend the rules. Go to the final. Second.
That was Fowler and Wills. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. So roll call the third and final. I'll read it for the third and final time. Amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47387, county parcel number 16-70323-004, and 16-70332-004, from R1 Single Family Residential District to C2 Life Commercial District. Any discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Wasniak and Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. And the next one is an ordinance amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47385, county parcel number 16-40236-010, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Staff request move the third and final. This is the blowing spring area over where the gear garden is.
Make a motion to suspend the rules. Go to the final. Second.
That was Fowler and Hansel. This is a vote that go to the third and final.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final. Amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47385, county parcel number 16-40236-010, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any discussion?
Second.
That was Wills and Wasniak.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Now we're both, this is a motion to vote.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next one is Metfield Skills Park. Amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47388, county parcel number 16-20953-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And staff request going to the third and final.
Make a motion to suspend the rules. Go to the final. Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak. So this is a vote and a motion to go to the third and final.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. So I'll read it for the third and final. Amended in Bellis to zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47388, county parcel number 16-20953-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Fowler and Wills. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Next one was an ordinance amended, ordinance number 2022-18 regarding the regulation of short-term rentals to provide greater flexibility concerning septic inspection requirements declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Does this still have to go to the final?
This is on first street.
Okay. Make a motion to suspend the rules. Go to the final. Second.
That was Fowler and Hansel. Vote and motion to go to the third and final.
Councilmember Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. So I'll read it for the third and final. Amendmented ordinance number 2022-18 regarding the regulation of short-term rentals to provide greater flexibility concerning septic inspection requirements declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Before we go, I think, you know, a lot of these things have gone over in the work session. That's what we're going so fast. But I wanted to stop and explain this one at least a little. So this is an amendment to the short-term rental ordinance. And what it does is it says, if you, I'm going to paraphrase, if you need to get, if you have septic, so you can either have a septic inspection and before it said certify, which made some people nervous. So now we said stay or show. That the septic system is property within the apartments, maybe age, that's one thing. Or totally separate, you could say, look, I've had it pumped in the last five years and here's something showing I've had it pumped in the last five years. And the third thing is, if you were built in the last five years, then you don't need to do any of those. If you show that your certificate of occupancy, because obviously then if you're on septic, it's a brand new system. There's no sense in inspecting it. It's disinspected recently, right? So that third one was an oversight. We had the rule in there, in my opinion, we had the rule in there about the inspection for fire and whatnot, excepting out new builds. But we shouldn't have this excepted out also. So anyway, we're trying to make it easier and more viable for people to get a program if they're trying, if they're sure they're ready. So.
Mr. Mayor. Does the city have a list of contractor, I don't know how to say that properly, I guess. But as far as getting certification or a statement of functionality, et cetera, is there a list that people can refer to? I get calls every, every school day. And it is the same, either trying to go through the city website to get information on who can use, how to do this, every, it's very confusing for a lot of people.
Yeah.
And if there's any way that we could at least put that information, either flag that's on the city website where people can at least, you know, the septic questions, renter or whatever, where they can just click on it and it answers your questions. Because everybody is just running around in circles trying to get this thing figured out. And nobody knows, and what the problem seems to be is getting a certification or a statement from anybody. And I don't know, and I don't know how to answer that. And I can't speak on behalf of the septic companies because I don't know what the hesitation is there or what, why they're so hesitant to follow through with any of these things. So I know there's a lot of confusion on the, on the short-term rental side as far as we can just.
Doug, did you want to say something about that? I'll give you a sec, Larry.
Thanks, Mayor. Council. We've received 29 applications so far. I do have a list of five septic installers that are 70s. So if you would like that list to show any of those, if folks want to call in, we could also, we can't tell who to use, but I think we're concerned to provide a list of people that have submitted thus far.
Well, I don't want to pick at you guys, but a lot of people complain about trying to get through to the city. So that's kind of the other side too, is that going through the automated system, they hit roadblocks there too.
Yeah, I mean, we have four or five people entering the phone.
I understand that, that's what I mean. I know you've got to be busy. I'm not saying that.
It does have a list, so when the number they choose, the person's on the phone. And I don't know what people, I didn't call that, but I'm starting to reach out and use that.
I think it's just a lot of hanging up. Like I said about, that's not a pointed statement towards you guys at all.
Yeah, I'm not trying to invite that problem. I've been to the city three times today. I got to all the times.
I'm just conveying it from my experience.
What? What do you think?
Do we know this language in this supposedly ordinance is going to be a real concern to these other companies? Do we, like, rule this?
I think we don't. I think we don't, for sure. I don't think we're.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Larry, did you hear that?
I don't think yet. I've got three minutes. One question that I have is that the language that's in here, one of the things that we had an issue before with, it says in the ordinance, a statement certifying that the septic system is in compliance with the, the order, in compliance with the state code or something to that effect. Is the language in here going to be a problem for anything that you perceive that will come down the pipeline? You've seen some of the reports, the detailed reports by some firms, the lesser detailed reports by other firms. And there's no certification in there that it says I'm in compliance on any of them. It gives you what they observed, what they found. If there's deficiencies, they identify them, but they don't say it's not in compliance. So is there anything in the wording in here that would create a problem for you to accept a report from any of the firms that are out there?
I don't think there's anything that will prevent us from accepting them. I just, we just don't want staff to have to make the decision that a licensed septic installer should be making. So if they say it's operational for the ADH, and I looked at several that noted no repairs needed and functioning, it just didn't say, it just didn't certify that. So I think that we can look through those and make a determination that.
I don't want us, I don't want us to pass.
And I'm sure that we should narrow this actually, that we have a volume or people aren't going to be able to work to your standard.
And so we got into that issue before, and I want to make sure that the language that's worded here is not going to create a problem for you, because there isn't detailed forms that I've seen from various companies. There's nothing on there that says it's in compliance. We saw it, we didn't see it, we couldn't find it. In some cases, they don't have recommendations for repairs or fixing. But as an example, if I can't find the lid on my septic tank in the report, what is that going to say to you? Will I tell you? Is it okay or not?
If the installer didn't find the lid, then it didn't inspect it properly. You have to find the lid to get in to do that.
But he's not going to say it's not in compliance. He's going to say, well, I didn't find.
If he didn't do the inspection or did the pumping, that's, you know, the case by case that we're meant to address.
I want to see us go down the road again, that gives us an issue that if we were you and the problem. So I want to make sure.
I think these two options they are offered in here, one of them should be.
The other side of it is, is that ADH on their site, if you type in healthyarkansas.gov/septic, it will take you to the website. And it has the rules in there for septic licenses and so on. Hopefully, I think for us is to provide a link between that site where the licensed people are, or the DRs, because they can do the inspections, and the installers that can do the inspections.
Okay.
And so to have that link on our website or available at your front desk would be helpful to the people who are trying to find a septic.
Sure.
I believe we have that, I'm concerned. So to provide a link to it on our first, the other side, that would help, I think would help answer your question.
Right. Just one more question. Are these names of the inspector, are these names of inspectors that successfully inspected license installers? Okay. All right.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Wasniak and Wills. Roll call vote and motion to approve.
Yes, we already had that with Fowler and Hansel, but.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Okay.
So roll call vote. Councilmember Snow.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one.
Mayor, we need to have a separate motion to vote on the emergency clause.
Oh, okay. Good point. We had an emergency clause, so this would go into effect right away, which would be helpful for the SDR owners, obviously.
I want a motion declaring an emergency and other purposes. Second.
Okay. That was Fowler and Hansel.
That was a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Yes. Motion to approve emergency clause. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
No.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion was approved five to one. Okay, moving on. Resolution I, amended the 2023 city budget to recognize appropriate $84,985 in remaining unspent capital budget funding from 2022 to complete the purchase and installation of access control hardware and software for the new public safety building. And the chief is here if there's any questions, but if you recall from the work session, this was money that wasn't spent last year because the equipment wasn't here and ready to be put in, so now it's spent in 2023. So that's the reason for it.
I want a motion to approve. Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wills.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter or enter a contract with Striker Medical pursuant to NASBO Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of two cardiac life pack, 15 V4 monitors, and in the amount, like to exceed $90,000 for use by the fire department.
Second.
That was Wills and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Wasniak.[1739.56] Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving sole condemnation litigation against Wilpin Investments LLC for acquisition of Pride of Way and temporary construction expenses related to the Mercy Way Improvement Project. Jason, it says, staff request third and final, but is the resolution.
It's a resolution, it doesn't need that.
But does it need an emergency clause?
No, sir, it does not, resolution takes effect immediately.
Okay, for the benefit of the audience, this was, I have a dude, the Mercy Way Bridge Project, it's the owner of the gas station in that 71 in Mercy Way, and they didn't like the amount that was estimated, that land they were losing was valued at, so we had mediation and came to an agreement with them, and I will say, you know, the amount was 121, 121,000, and we were talking, I said, oh, it was 75,000 more, but there was an updated appraisal, because you have to do an appraisal up to the date of the taking, and it actually came out at 133,000, so the new appraisal was a little higher, I mean, it's still more than, I'm just saying, it's not really quite as much higher than the appraisal, the settlement wasn't quite as high as it appears over the appraisal, because the new appraisal was operating, gone up a little, but the taking occurred.
Make a motion to approve, second.
That was Fowler and Wills, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one is a resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract extension with Vance Brothers A and M Mountlacktive C 273, Chris Wryard, for slurry street resurfacing, and we have a couple of folks here from the street department that, you know, but this was the one where they didn't get all the slurry down at the end of last year because of the cold, so our new contract, which is going to occur this spring, will have the last six miles from last year, and then have some new miles, I want to say, is it 19 more than the six? Go by memory. Let's see, yeah, resolution, yeah. Yeah, it's 29 more, so six miles from last year and 29 this year, so.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Fowler, second by Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one is a resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group in Mountlactive C 45,615 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevy Silverado four-by-four truck for use by the fire department.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Wills and Wasniak, any discussion?
I just want to say nothing, so it's in the budget secondary, just want to remind everybody, these were discussed during the work session last week, so we're all totally, you know, up to speed on what we're talking about.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Resolution was approved six to zero. Next one was a resolution, amended the 2023 budget to recognize various donation revenues of $189,792.12 in appropriating funding for designated purposes, and this has to do with citizens who have given donations to the city, and it's interesting, there was an attachment in section N, which listed out some of the donations, and it's really quite impressive, some of the donations from citizens.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Wasniak, second by Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one's a resolution, amended the 2022 budget to recognize impact fee revenues totaling $602,000, give all our finance directors, not here tonight, but this was a decision by her, go ahead and put that in the 22 budget, it was not spent, so that will just make the revenue that much higher than the expenses for 2022, but in the past, it didn't have in the budget, she thought it would be better if it didn't.
A question, Mr. Mayor, the breakdown from the 602, because the impact fees, the part, part of the police department.
I don't know if I have included here, let me see, no, she didn't include it, but yeah, it's fire, police, and library, those three, and I do remember when we were looking at some of the fire expenses coming up, that by the time the expenses rolled off, by the end of the year, she thought the fire would be the million dollars, just fire, so the impact fee programs were pretty successful, that the fire was the basis of the three.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Wasniak and Fowler, I can get to that breakdown of the three. Motion by Wasniak, second by Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Next one's a resolution, amended the 2023 city budget to appropriate $33,350 from otherwise unappropriated, unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves, the capital improvement budget to fund necessary plumbing repairs to City Hall, and these are concurrent, current as we speak, they were working at least three days last week, worked a long day, today is holiday, so it's turned out to be a pretty good project, like the bunch formerly doing a lot of work.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Wasniak and Wills, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
And Wills.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero. Our next one's a resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Diamond C Construction Company in an amount of $221,589 plus a 15% contingency of $33,238.35 for the construction of Dogwood Drive Road repairs and approving a budget amended.
I would like to say, I thought it would have been way more than that, so decided to finally get repaired, too. I'd like to make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Fowler, and second by Hansel, any more discussion in there? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero.
Question, Mr. Mayor, before we leave, because that was damaged, the flooding that we had, is there any reimbursement that's available to us for that, for the repairs? No, it did not qualify, didn't qualify, it's because they didn't declare it as a mud dam injury or whatever.
Right.
Is that what it was? It's not that it wasn't damaged by the flood, but they didn't declare it, so we didn't have an emergency in the middle of the story, so.
It's like insurance companies, they say, that's really not a flood, that's just a lot of rushing water, you just thought it was a flood. Anyway, next one's a resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for lawn care in the amount of $45,368.60 for moaning landscaping services for city facilities.
Motion to approve, second.
Wasniak and Fowler, any discussion?
The question, is the price going up, or does it have any merit that it would start our lawn, our lawn care for our own facilities? Would it make any sense for us to do that, across twice, with the price drop from last year, I believe?
This came under the fire department chief, well, how was this compared to last year?
Oh. 13,000? Yes, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it had an extra facility.
But one part of it had a competition as well.
Yeah.
So part of that, part of that right in this facility, this facility, in 20 weeks is about 10 grand for this facility here with your lawn care, so the other, other increase was the increase in gas, electricity, and stuff like that, it's still much cheaper, I think, than getting somebody hired here, I believe.
Well, what I was just going to say is, we've done this multiple years, but we finally reached the year where it's gotten over the bid requirement amount, where you have to approve it and we have to bid it, so it has to be, I can tell you that.
That's correct. Yeah, so, and something to think about, a big, big event, and I guess again, it's that person.
I suggested we go into the lawn care business for our facility, for our facilities, but the reality is that sometimes we need to weigh that as a viable option, because it would be more cost effective for us.
Yeah, just keep in mind, too, that in the past, last couple of years, we've had bids over 60,000, 60 to 62,000.
That's a good point.
We're not obligated to accept those, that's the only one we get, you know, should we get it, just in the campaign, if we're not obligated to get a capital, we won't bid at that price.
What do you mean, as far as the 60,000?
Yeah, if we only admitted that we thought it was too high, we wouldn't have to take it.
Yeah, but right now, we're in critical, we're in critical crisis right now with our, our laws currently.
Plus, we've had facility, this one.
That's right, yeah. This is 10,000, 10,000 for this facility here, increase about 10,000.
Yeah.
But that would be all of the shrubs, all of the lawn, all the rest of that.
Well, right now, it's including, as of right now, it's including the mowing, that don't include mulch for next year, I think the price will go up, that's what we're being done.
You got it.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Wasniak.
Actually, Was made the motion first, and then Fowler.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Motion was approved six to zero, announcements.
Very fast, really quickly.
Sure. The donations to the city, $189,000, it's just been such a generosity, I think, of the residents of El Vista, and the service that they, probably a lot of them received, you know, because they were, you know, were listened to, cared for, really taken care of, they felt themselves, right? And I would be able to with some of that myself, I mentioned in the work session with our EMS teams, and, you know, people like that, when they come into a residence home, they're just phenomenally caring, they're trained, so the residents recognize that, right? But one thing, so the donations that come in, I mean, I just want to be sure that people understand, they send it for the fire, or the police, or the library, wherever it does go to those departments, not just going to our general finances.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I just want to be sure, they send it for the fire, for the police, for those who's close to this, so that's it, just one part of it.
Yeah, good point. Okay, announcements, next city council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, April 17, at this location, next city council regular meeting, 6:30 PM on Monday, April 24, planning commission work session, 4:30 PM on Thursday, March 30, planning commission regular meeting at 4:30 PM, Monday, April 10, board of construction appeals, 3 PM on Tuesday, April 11, if necessary, and all those are at the El Vista District Court, if there's nothing else, you can go ahead and adjourn.